I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask if there's anyone else in the audience recording the meeting? Seeing none, if you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We now move on to special recognitions, and we have a few.
We do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first one is I want to share with you that Connie Chung, a senior at Auburn High, has been selected as the Mass Association of Schools Superintendent to earn the Certificate of Academic Excellence. So just to share with you some of Connie's achievements while a student at Auburn High. She's been a member of the concert band, as well as jazz band, and marching band, serving as section leader or band president, member of National Honor Society, the Model UN, the math team. She's been a class officer, a treasurer, for all four years, member of the quiz show, the WGBH Quiz Show, participates in six AP courses, hopes to major in performance in college, and is highly motivated in challenges herself. So I want to just recognize Connie for the great work that she's done.
Great job, Connie.
And the other part I would say is this is never an easy decision, and I think that speaks to the high caliber of our students, but certainly Connie really shined in this, and I'm happy to give her this recognition.
Congratulations. That's excellent.
Congratulations.
Do we have any comments or questions for Connie?
That's a great job. Yeah, I could tell your dad is very proud of you.
Congratulations. Keep up the good work.
I hope you slept at some point.
Coffee's my best friend.
So do you know what school you plan on going to, or any particular few that you're thinking of?
I'm looking into conservatories and universities that have really good music programs within them, and with the possibility of also studying economics, so I still won't sleep when I'm in my forties.
That's very interesting. So have you been in Auburn schools right along?
Yeah.
Since the beginning, huh?
They planted the seed in kindergarten, and it blossomed to this tree.
Well, the reason I ask is because we love hearing things like that. We love hearing that we were at least a part of what you've accomplished and what you're going to accomplish in the future. That's fantastic. We couldn't be more proud of you.
Thank you, Mr. Scobie.
Any other comments for Connie?
Connie was great in the sixth grade, and she was a standout then, and this is wonderful to see, and I wish you the best as you continue on with your academic future.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Connie doesn't mind staying up there. She'll stay up there.
She's also going on the Madrid exchange.
You are?
Good, good.
Now is she helping to run that event, or?
Yeah, we just give her everything.
There you go. Take good care of the kids.
Are you going so you can sleep?
On the plane ride, maybe.
Oh, yeah.
That's about it.
Yeah.
Connie, if you'd like to come up, and we're going to present you with her certificate, and we'd love to shake your hand and congratulate you.
Okay.
Congratulations. It's a great job.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Some wonderful accomplishments there. Good luck.
Nice, hearty handshake.
Privilege, Connie.
They have great coffee there.
Congratulations. I don't remember. Yes. Great my knowledge.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Great job.
Great job. And we have another special recognition.
I do. Another, and actually Connie is a part of this too, the marching band festivities, as you know, this is a program that's really in its infancy at Auburn High School, but they continue to earn awards. And I understand this past weekend, according to Ms. Bailey, they spent nearly 24 hours of marching band fun between Saturday and Sunday. They did take home the bronze medal, as well as tying for second in their division in the MICCA finals. So a huge tribute to our band students under Ms. Bailey's direction, and great job, great job.
Congratulations once again. Pass that along to your bandmates, please. Any comments? Seeing none, is that all we have for special recognitions?
It is. Thank you.
Do we have any citizens' comments this evening? Connie, you all done commenting? Thank you. Okay. I would seek approval of the minutes of October 7th.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. And we now move on to the Student Representatives Report. Are you ready to go, yeah?
Yeah.
All right.
I apologize for my lateness. Something came up. But overall, school year's been doing pretty well ever since we got the schedules back on track, as well as the marching band winning competitions recently. Model United Nations recently went to a meeting at St. John's that went really well. We learned a lot for the learning experience to go to Bosman, as well as just overall waiting for this Friday's football game, as in senior night, and just participating in sports and having a good time, as well as the seniors getting prepared for their year blogs and class trips as well.
Excellent. Any questions or comments for, yeah?
Sounds like the high school's a very busy place these days.
Yeah.
And how was your school year going so far?
Pretty stressful.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Did you overload with courses?
Oh, no, no.
No?
It's mostly extracurricular activities.
Okay. Well, I'm sure you'll find a way to manage, keep us updated on your progress, as well as the schools.
Yeah.
Thanks for the report.
Thank you.
We now move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item is the request, as Connie had mentioned, for Mr. Kramer to take a group of students to Madrid. If you remember, this has been successfully run a couple of times, and the benefit to it, not only to our students, I mean, to go over and spend time in the homes and living and being immersed in life in Madrid, but that students return, and the plan is for them to return in June. So with your permission, Mr. Chair, I'll have Mr. Kramer come to the microphone in case you have any questions. It has been very successful.
Yes, yes. This is the third time. Ms. Samantha Kozic will be my, will be the chaperone this year, because Shirley cannot.
Sure.
Okay. Any questions you might have for me, or? I know I gave packets and everything back in the springtime.
Yep, you did.
But I don't know if you have any specific questions, or what would you like to know?
Maybe if you could just give us the quick rundown of it again.
Sure.
Just the basics and what the students are getting out of it.
Okay.
We have read through the packets, but it's always better to hear from you and your insight.
Well, we'll be spending 17 days. We'll leave April 8th, and we'll return April 24th. Our students will be living with students from Ortega Gasset High School. My friend Christina Alonso, who I've known for probably 25 years, is the English teacher at Ortega Gasset High School. It's a small neighborhood school. It's probably 250 to 300 students, and it's geographically isolated, which is nice. High parent involvement in the school. You know, like I said, it's a neighborhood school. Sometimes kids can come from outside of the districts. I don't know if it's a school choice or how they do it, but every now and then you, some of the kids are from, you know, not from that neighborhood, but generally that's where they are, which is very close to where Samantha will be living with Christina, and I'll be living with Christina's sister and brother-in-law. That's how I met Christina, through them. But they're all, it's probably a 15-minute walk, or 20-minute walk, although we'll take a car, but we have walked before. It's very close to the center of the city, which makes everything very easy as far as, you know, getting around Madrid. They supply us with a seven-day pass, get on the metro or the bus as much as possible, and then they give it another seven days, so they take care of us the whole time. We will be going to school some days. We meet at school every morning at 8:00. We'll either attend some of their classes, or we will, I'll take them to the Prada Museum, which they'll be prepared to see certain painters. I'll prepare them during the year here. And we'll also go to the Reina Sofia, which you see Picasso's Guernica, you know, the anti, he painted it during, in 1937 for the World's Fair in Paris, anti, you know, the Spanish Civil War was going on at the time, it was anti-war. We will also take in a field trip to Segovia, which is about an hour by bus, probably an hour, hour and a half northeast. It's where I studied as an undergrad, and I chose, I always choose that city because it's, you have a Roman aqueduct that still would function if they used it, heading to the old city. You have a 16th-century Gothic cathedral, the last one built in Spain, and you have a castle. It's called the Alcatraz, which is fortress, it's an Arabic word, and which is quite beautiful, and it's all within three or four minutes. So it makes it an easy, easy field trip. And then when they come here, we'll take them to New York City, because we'll be in Madrid the whole time. We really win in this situation.
Yeah.
If they're going to Auburn, we're going to Madrid. But, and then obviously the kids, they'll be, if we're out and about, we'll be back by 3:00 that afternoon, because the kids don't eat in school. The big meal in Spain is between 2:00 and 3:00, but they eat after school, so they'll go home with their families and eat. Sometimes Christina has planned for the Royal Palace, and as we meet later and go to the Royal Palace, or whatever else she may have planned. Sometimes the other teachers invite us on field trips. We've invited on other field trips before, but we're always busy, you know? And then when they come here, they'll be coming here. I don't have the dates exactly finalized. I'm hoping they'll come, they'll come in the week of June 22nd. I don't know if it's going to be June 22nd or June 23rd. Christina's going to get back to me, I think, this week. So as soon as I know those dates, I will let you know.
Any questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So how many years have you been doing this, Dan?
This is the third time.
Okay. And do our students, they stay in families there?
Yes.
Is it one of our students to one family?
Yes, yes.
So about how many students do you bring usually?
We're bringing 15. The first year we brought 10, the second time we brought 15, and this year we have 15. Eight seniors, seven juniors.
And they're all staying within a few feet of each other, or?
Well, I don't know about a few feet. I don't, I.
I thought it was like a neighborhood.
Well, it is. I said generally, most of them will be right in this neighborhood. It's, you have a highway that comes this way, and then you have the river, Manzana, that comes this way, and it kind of goes like this, so it's kind of isolated.
Mm-hmm.
And, but then you get close to the city, I mean, close to the center of the city. But sometimes, as I mentioned, we've had kids live outside of the neighborhood, just like they would here if a school choice kid lived in Oxford or something like that. But we're, we're all connected. We'll all be on, I even have a folder specifically, because Sherry's not there, I got this, what I got a year ago, for WhatsApp. We'll be connected. You can text.
Okay.
Christina has a phone that the school gives us solely for the kids to call us. They can get in touch with us anytime.
Okay.
And we'll see them every day on the weekends. I don't know if, because sometimes the families might take them on a field trip to another city, and then, you know, day trip, that kind of thing.
Now, are the families like the families of the students that might come here to visit?
They are the families.
Oh, they are?
They are the families, yes.
Oh, so you're making a connection like that there, and then continuing in here?
Yes, basically what happens is.
Oh, that's nice.
This is unique in a sense. You can go to college, and you can, you can spend a semester abroad and live with a family, but it's not the same thing, because you're just really, when you live a semester abroad in a country, or in Spain, you're really paying for a room. I mean, you might develop a relationship with that family, but they're not taking you around. I mean, that can happen, but it's not the norm. Here, you are part of the family. If they go out to eat, they pay for you. They take you to this museum, they'll pay for you. And then vice versa, when they come here, they're part of the family. Now, if they're out with, you know, a group of friends, you know, the group is out, maybe, you know, seeing some sights, you know, and they're going to buy something, they may pay for it.
Sure.
But a lot of times the kids will say, no, I'll get it. So they really won't spend a lot of money unless they're big shoppers.
Yeah.
Because they always ask me, how much do I, I don't know, I'm not a shopper. So, but generally, it's, the kids are saying, geez, you know, if we go on the field trip, their lunch is packed, you know? So it's, they're used to it. They have exchanges, they have, this small school has an exchange with France, they have an exchange with a school in England, and Christina runs both, and that's what makes it tough, because she runs the one, the English come in the February, like the first time we went, they left on a Wednesday, we arrived on Saturday.
Wow.
And then Christina then went to England on the middle of March. That's why it's better that we, that's why we changed it to April, which is good, because now we don't have February vacation anymore. So it worked out well. And so.
And the 2000 is what, mostly airfare then?
It's actually, yeah, it's, well, you've got insurance, you're taken care of. The company I use is ACIS. I've been traveling with them since 1990. I've run different types of trips with them. I've gone to Costa Rica seven times, I've been to Europe, I mean, Spain, France, in Italy, and Spain, too, larger trips in the summer when I was at St. Peter Maryan. But they have an office right in Madrid. They take care of everything. If there's ever an issue with the flights, they smooth it right over. There was one time, years ago, we were in Costa Rica, and they knew we wanted to come home on a Saturday, they couldn't get us out, so they paid for everything to take care of us, that, you know, they just take care of everything, just makes it so much easier. And they're based in Boston. So I feel, when I'm taking kids, I feel very comfortable with them.
Sounds good.
Doing it on my own, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah.
So I want every base covered.
Sounds very good. Very well planned.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions?
I just have one question. Do the students get to meet the host family before they go there? Is there communication between?
Well, this, yeah, this, I'm glad you asked that, because I had forgotten. Christina and I have done this in years past, not with the groups, not with this trip, but we did it before we even had the exchange. She has a, it's called Mad Dog, Madrid-Auburn, and it's, I never knew MySpace, but I guess it's like a MySpace, back, was it early 2000s? I don't know. It's a secure website that Christina, you know, they only can get through with, through me or through Christina, and they'll be able to communicate there. We've done it with our classes before. And now she said this makes sense for us to do it, you know, with the kids going.
Sounds good. They'll have rapport with the.
Yes, they should already know each other. And what happens is, is sometimes the parents start emailing each other and trying to communicate. It's kind of funny, but it's.
That's great. Sounds exciting.
It's worked out pretty well.
Anything else?
Sounds good.
Well, thank you for the presentation, and the request was well-written, as usual, as well as the information that we received earlier. Fantastic. I don't want to give you any homework, but we would love to see a PowerPoint or documentary of some sort, if you, some pictures, or even throw them into.
Okay, I have a, well, I only have two PowerPoints, but I do have a PowerPoint specifically for this trip, if you want to see that.
I want to see what happens after you.
Oh, after we go, okay.
Yeah, we'll have selfies and.
All right, well, the kids will have to help. Oh, yeah. Oh, no, we, we, yeah, okay, we'll put something.
Nothing, nothing.
Usually, usually we come by, I think.
Yeah, you did.
We usually come by.
Yes, with the, with the students from Spain.
Yes, we usually do that, yes.
And that's great, but yeah, if you want to add a little something to it, a few pictures, we would love that.
Okay, we love pictures.
And nothing serious, no real homework, just pictures, funny pictures.
Okay.
No sad pictures.
Oh, they usually, usually no one wants to come home, you know?
I don't blame them.
Yeah. That includes me.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Keep up the good work. It's a great program here.
Thank you. Thanks for approving it. I appreciate it.
I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion to approve.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with your approval, I'd like to recommend that we move on from new business, the Unified Sports Information. Mrs. Rosemary Reedy is our Director of Pupils Services, and she's here to answer any questions if you may have them on this issue. As noted in the packet, and the field trip form is included in there as well, we've had, through the Auburn Record and Culture, they've brought the Special Olympics to the Auburn schools, typically in March, then it's held up at Auburn High School, and they have the basketball events. This is something that Mrs. Reedy and some others have been working on, more of a unified sports program. It would be taking place on a weekend. It's a bocce tournament, and there seems to be considerable interest from our students. I think it's a great opportunity. So I will turn it over to Mrs. Reedy, just to give a brief update about it.
Thank you. Yes, I'm one of the teachers at the high school, Mrs. Allison DeLuca, is our Special Education Department head, and she was really the person who spearheaded this, because she wanted to bring two of her loves together, working with special education students, as well as sports. So she reached out to Special Olympics Massachusetts and came in, and they spoke to us a little bit about the programs that they have. So this Unified Sports is in cooperation with the Mass Association of Student Council, so the student council, students work as well. And on November 15th, at Westboro High School, there was a bocce tournament. And what they do is, they, it's a full day of events, well, half-day of events. They have opening ceremonies, they have closing ceremonies, they treat it just like, you know, an Olympic event, and the, in the, the students that are involved are students with and without disability, so it really helps to blend the students, it builds friendships and cooperation, and it's really, quite a few other districts around have the program as well, and I think it would be a great opportunity to, for the students to be able to attend that day. They play, they can have up to three teams that play bocce, and there's four people on a team. So right now, we have probably at least 30 students that have sent back, you know, interest, and families that have sent back interest, so it really seems like it's something that's, people are really looking forward to doing. So any questions?
Any questions?
So will all 30 be able to take part?
Well, working on that right now. You know, they had said originally they could only take, you know, three to four teams, but because of the large turnout, they are trying to see if we can get, you know, Team One and Team Two to work on that as well. But there are other activities that they can do, some will just go, some put in that they just wanted to go to be, you know, fans, just to support either their, you know, their peers, so some had put in for that as well.
Any other questions or comments?
That's great.
I just think it's a great thing you're doing.
I think it'll be.
Sounds like fun.
Should be a good day. We'll make sure we get back some pictures for you to send.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah, would love to see it. I echo the statements of the committee. What a fantastic thing, when I was reading about it, it was, it really, it really is a fantastic thing. And I go, always go back to our visit a few years ago with some of our students, it was around Christmas time, and to see some of the students who were not necessarily special needs, but really helping out in that department, and I love to see that. It's really, it's something that those students are going to be able to take with them for a long time, and so what you're doing is really.
And with the support of, you know, Mr. Davis, the athletic director as well, he's really behind it, and Mrs. DeLuca, really, like I said, was the driving force behind it. So and Mr. Handfield, everyone's really on board with it, and very excited about it. So I think it's something new, you know, for us to venture down, to be able to offer the Unified Sports, because there is such a great rockets-to-rockets program at the high school right now with that partnership, and I've seen that firsthand, and it's just amazing to me that, that level of, you know, of compassion and friendship that they have all through the day at the high school level. So I think this is just a continuation of it, and just to see the excitement on some other kids' faces, those, you know, those students without disabilities, just very excited to partner with that. So I think, you know, I appreciate your support, and it's, I think it's a great thing to do.
It's very moving, and it's not something that those students can learn from a book, really, it's just a great experience.
I agree.
So thank you for representing this evening, and Dr. Bredal, did you have something?
Through the chair, I wouldn't typically bring forward an instant trip, this is for Westboro High School, but I thought we're really starting a partnership with Special Olympics. I would encourage you to make a motion on this, because there will be some classes incurred on this in terms of transporting the kids, but I think the benefit to all of our kids is certainly well worth the investment.
Absolutely.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
We look forward to hearing about it and getting some results. Not that we care who wins or loses, but just real, the results of what happens that day.
We'll make sure that we have some good pictures to share. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, I put in your packet, and I want to thank the entire team that worked on this. We met on October 5th, and as you can see in reviewing the strategic plan, that again, it's really driven by the input of 120-plus individuals from across the community, considerable progress, and there are many areas that have been completed in here. We will actually join together again for a brief time on November 9th, the planning team that reviews this, just to be sure that we have our activities set for the year, and then we'll reconvene in April. So it is my recommendation that you approve the updates made to the strategic plan, because our goal would be to post these on the website, and that way people can see that we do continue to adhere to it and in fulfilling the goals.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the strategic plan updated as of October 2015.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
We appreciate all the work, but it obviously took a lot of work and consideration to put this together, so.
Absolutely. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
The next item, and with apologies to Mrs. Lofez with the change in date of the meeting, she was unable to come this evening, but she is one of our administrators. There are three currently who are in the doctoral program, and she is seeking permission, as per her letter in the packet, to, on a voluntary basis, to survey teachers regarding their perceptions of the impact of the Ette Val system on their teaching practices. So she then will use this information, she's using a quantitative approach, and will collect that survey data, and will come up with some findings that will eventually be incorporated into her dissertation. So I think this is a great, could have great benefit for us, because we'll get to use and see that data anonymously in the aggregate, and we'd share it with our Ette Val. So it is my recommendation that you approve for allowing her to do this.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes, is she going to offer this to teachers in the entire school system?
She is. It's going to be across the whole district. It'll be voluntary, so there's no pressure to do it, and it'll be anonymous.
Oh, beautiful, okay.
Yeah, anonymous.
I actually have a question about the results, would she be willing to share? Because I know that that has been a hot topic in the past.
Sure, absolutely.
Just I'll be glad to hear it, it would be interesting.
Good.
Excellent. Let's say I would not want to be asking those questions, at my school, but we just haven't welcomed it like Auburn has. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Couple of donations I want to make you aware of, one was from Rotman's Furniture. Mrs. Williams, she's a grade-one teacher at Packchuck School, sought out a donation from them, and they actually donated four area rugs that are used in their classrooms for reading areas, so it is my recommendation that you accept those. Mrs. Danic, as I included in your packet, has already sent a letter of thanks to them.
Excellent. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the Rotman's Furniture donation of four area rugs to the Packchuck School with our greatest thanks.
Second, we have a second, any discussion?
Thank you.
Very generous of you.
More thank yous, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
And one other donation, Officer, our school resource officer, Brian Kennedy, recently distributed traffic safety vests, the goal being for teachers and staff on duty, doing, directing traffic, that they have those as an extra, easily identifiable, but also for their safety as well. They were actually purchased by the Auburn Police Association, Mr. Berthew helped, Lionel Berthew helped coordinate that purchase. So, with your approval, we will send a letter of thanks to the Auburn Police Association.
Excellent, I entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
I saw them today, and they look very professional.
They do.
What color are they, the green?
They are bright green.
Bright green.
You cannot miss them.
Okay.
They were being worn proudly today.
They were, yes.
Not only that, it just gives you more sight and input on the people that are standing there, and it's better for safety.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
It's a real good thing.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
The next item, and I share this with you as an idea for your consideration, I know the current school year and last school year, you deviated as a committee from what might be considered the traditional school calendar in terms of, as Mr. Kramer had alluded, minimizing the February vacation. We had just a half-day on Friday, Monday, and Tuesday off, and students were in session. We also, for the calendar, you've created, students went to school this past Good Friday and will again this year. So, as you'll be contemplating this, and I bring forward to you recommendations, we typically do it in January or February, people start really asking at that time. In concert with discussions with the leadership team, thought that perhaps you may wish to have a survey go out to see, and these are just ideas of some questions, or you may forego it completely, you may not want to do it, but I thought would be that this could be surveyed not only for staff, but also for the families, the parents of our students' families. So, I share it with you for your input of discussion.
Any questions, comments?
I have a comment, just I, I like the idea of doing surveys, because I think a lot of people do have strong views about which way they want to go, and I, I, I think it's important that feel like they, that people feel like their voices are heard, and this is the most, I guess, fair way to do it. So, I, I like it, I appreciate it.
I agree. Wayne?
I only got a comment on the Good Friday, I had a couple complaints, and I had discussed with the superintendent within, I know she was going to get back to me, but you might have been pretty busy, and we both kind of forgot about it, but I'd like to see that considered as a day off if possible. But that's, you're going to do the survey, so we'll see what it comes back at, and go that way first, and that's just a thing that I've heard and I've talked to you about, and I just want to let the committee know about it too.
Yep.
And we'll do a follow-up on it later.
And as a chair, another comment on this, we actually did a survey back, it would have been in the late winter of 2014, as we were setting the fourteen-fifteen calendar, because knowing that we needed to elongate this past summer, we had looked at, you know, did people, we had asked about Good Friday, obviously, but we'd also asked about if we were going to minimize February or April, which would you prefer? It was overwhelmingly minimize February, and things so, so I think it would be good data to get back, I mean, there's certainly, I mean, these seem to be the most pressing of issues. The other item that we did add on here, and this was an idea that one of my nieces happened to be sharing that at her school, instead of doing early release, they do a late start day. Teachers commit at the regular time, and especially she being a high school student loved it, because she didn't have to go to school till 10:30, as opposed to, you know, so it was a great break day. So, that I thought would at least be, because we've typically built four to five half-days into our calendar, that it might be an option to consider, and we talked about it as leadership team as well.
I think that's actually a great idea, just don't tell the kids that the parents are voting on this, because that's not all three vote release.
Right.
Any further comments?
Well, I, I think I like the idea very much of doing a survey-
Yes.
-of all constituents that this affects, and I would most definitely like to see the results.
Absolutely.
I would like, I would like to see the results broken down into, into two parts, between the staff and the families. And further, I would like to see that last piece broken down as far as the professional day one, and the staff and families separated, just that one item.
The early release and-
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I just think it's, it's important that, that the teach, that we're getting an understanding of the teacher's input on that one in particular.
Through the chair, I have a question. With Good Friday being a religious holiday, wouldn't it be considered an excused absence if it was?
It is. So, any family who notified the school that they were taking it off as a, for religious reasons, it was an excused absence?
Okay.
Yes, yep.
Wayne?
Well, the only thing I got besides that is, like I said, we didn't get finalized on our discussion with the superintendent, but there were, there was complaints that they were doing testing on that same day, so people did not take the day off because of the testing. So, if there's something with, that we can move along there, I mean, there's issues and have been talked to, but we just, everything going on, the new middle school and stuff, it kind of went away a little bit, and now that we got it in discussion, we got it in a survey, I think it's a good thing.
Definitely.
And then we can finally make, you know, the right decision.
And I would think the staff that wanted to take it as a religious day would still have that, a professional day would still have that right.
A professional day they did, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yes, yep, of course.
I know other religions can take other religious.
Correct.
Yeah.
Excellent, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the draft calendar survey, as presented by Dr. Brunel.
So, and I have a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, great idea.
In your packet, as shared on a quarterly basis, is the Southwest County Collaborative Quarterly Report. We just had as a board our first meeting just about a week and a half or so ago, and I will tell you that the new executive director, Elizabeth Fitz-Morris, is doing absolutely fantastic job. Mr. John Love is the business manager, and I know that there were some financial challenges that I shared with you in previous years, but we're very much in a, in a great place right now, so it was a wonderful meeting, and just wanted to share that with you too, and provides a great support for children who's education cannot be satisfied here in the district for various reasons.
Excellent. Do I, a motion?
You can do that.
You want?
Yes, just to approve or accept it, the report, it needs to be as part of the, through the chair, the collaborative regulations, it is required that it be accepted by each school committee.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Thank you for doing the extra work.
Just out of curiosity, Dr. Brunel, how many students or how many citizens are-
Students from Auburn?
Yes.
We currently, I believe, have five students that are attending one of the collaborative programs, yes. It varies, the goal is always to bring students back, and in fact, we did that this school year. There was a period of transition last spring, and the child is now back at our school and doing well.
Excellent.
Good.
Very good.
Good.
Fantastic. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
The John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, this is an award that is given a tuition waiver for eight semesters, and as noted in the superintendent's memo, students have to earn at least one advanced, and then the other could be a proficient or advanced on the ELA in mathematics, and they have to be in the top twenty-five percent of the class. So, I did note in here, and would just like to read the students' names aloud, it is a nice honor, and Dr. Losae and I always attend with Mr. Handfield a breakfast in their honor the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. So, with congratulations to Nicole Berthew, Dawn Bissasar, Stephanie Bolden, Catherine Brophy, Kayla Cossey, Megan Chesna, Connie Chung, Joseph Coughlin, Rob Galloway, Amanda Gomes, Joseph Hamel III, Hannah Harris, Benjamin J, Justin Johnson, Megan Johnson, David Klett, Abigail Lucas, Jenna Matthew, Jacob McPherson, Hannah Michaela, Riley Millay, Samantha Moreau, Kyle Nowakowski, Ryan Nurse, Aro Mya, who is here with us tonight, Eleni Ortiz, Marissa Pierce, Catherine Rizoli, Emily Sarkisian, Connor Scully, Riley Simons, Albert Smirjack, Lindsay Funberg, Javier Velez, Sarah Vincent, Aubrey White, Lily White, Emily Whitaker, Ryan Williams, Alexis Wilson, and Giancarlo Zink. So, congratulations to all of them. The monetary value of this is not tremendously large, because the tuition at our state colleges and universities are kept quite low, there's lots of fees and rub and board, but still it's a great honor and an absolute savings that could be used for books and whatnot. So, congratulations to them.
Congratulations.
The safety team meeting, I wanted to make you aware, we may soon be advertising this to our families, the safety advisory team, along with Dr. Losae and I, plan to do a parent update, just to apprise them of the many safety procedures we have in place, the new ALICE training that staff was trained on, and yourselves were earlier this spring, and just to keep them updated, I think it's a, a great tribute to how seriously we take our students and staff's safety with this safety advisory team in place, and we'd like to give them some recognition, but also just to reassure parents and answer questions that we can. So, that will be on November 9th. And then finally, the Humanities Scholars Program, our first one will take place this Wednesday, it will be at Holy Cross College. Mr. Pat Dufour is the English teacher at the high school who supports our students who will be attending. I do continue to serve as the executive director of that, so I will be going doing the welcoming for the group, and we actually have a few school districts that have joined this year, namely Tantascwood, Dudley, Charlton, and Milbury, I believe, no, Milbury was part of it, maybe Grafton, I forget. There was three that were added this year that had not participated before, so I think it will be a great program. So, I'll report back following the next meeting.
Excellent. Any comments? And I'll move on to unfinished business.
So, we share with you again in the packet my self-assessment, and then also the goals and educator plan. So, I had shared the goals last time, I expanded upon them with the educator plan, trying to identify how I actually hope to go through and accomplish these, and I also want to note, as I, I share, I believe, each time, I mean, these are goals that I have identified, but it's certainly ones that will be accomplished through the work of the leadership team, certainly the, the staff and teachers and things, because it really is a team effort. So, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
We've all had an opportunity to look through the goals, self-evaluation. Any comments? Questions? I will say that I enjoyed reading through them, they were well-written, maybe a few too many exemplaries, but, just kidding.
Okay.
Now, I, I agreed with the self-evaluation part as well as the goals.
Thanks.
I thought they were very well-written, and I look forward to watching them obtain them. Any questions, comments, no?
I think you can just tell that you put a lot of thought into this, I mean, obviously you put a lot of thought, but I mean-
Excellent, well, I would-
I have a question, actually. For next year's evaluation, it's, can we incorporate a place to write comments? Is that possible? If, I mean, if you want, like, not that I took any points away, but if I were to take points away, or for, or even comment in a positive way, it would be nice to have the opportunity to do so, so.
We'll give you some scrap paper for that.
Okay, great, thanks.
A little post-it note, you know.
You gotta have paper at home, don't you?
I thought we did a pretty good job of revising the whole system, but apparently we left out-
Well, yeah, we could put a number down, but it doesn't explain anything, or-
I'll tell you what, when we go to the Cape next week, we'll sit in on the evaluation piece again, and see what they, see what they suggest. It was riveting, yes. Okay, I would, if there's no further comedy, I would entertain a motion. Anyone?
I'll make the motion to, I don't have it in front of me.
Oh, there it is.
Approve the superintendent's self-assessment goals and educator plan for the 2015-2016 school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I don't want to ask, but any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you, Dr. Brunel.
Thank you, and I will definitely provide you updates as the year progresses.
Thank you.
In terms of budgeting priorities, we actually, Dr. Losae, Mrs. Worsbicky, myself, have actually met with each of the leadership team members, those meetings took place throughout last week. The priorities were ones that had been carryovers from previous years, certainly the attainment of the strategic plan, professional development, our eda vow system, textbooks and technology, making sure that they are up to date, student safety, of course, and maintaining appropriate class sizes. But if there are any that you'd like to see added, or even any of those removed, we can certainly do so. Mrs. Worsbicky's in the process right now of compiling the whole document, and we will be ready to present on November 17th.
Any comments, questions?
No, I bet that's fun though.
Okay.
It's a team effort.
Moving on.
School building committee, we had our meeting just last week, it was another very positive meeting. There is a very small back punch list that they're continuing to work through. The landscaping is one of the issues, if you've driven in there, it just didn't take, and they didn't probably water it as much as they needed to, it was such a dry summer, but they have come in and reseeded again. They will not be signing off on it at least until the spring, as they had read, what they had stated last week, but the building itself, we continue to be very pleased, very, very pleased with, and thankful to the support of the Auburn community.
Any comments, questions? Are there any large ticket items that-
There really are not.
No?
No, they're minor.
The only thing they added is some furniture and desk and stuff that we got, because there was more students added.
Right.
But we have the money left over, so we had the money to be able to put into that, so-
Okay.
We handled that without a problem, and everything else seems to be good, and you still have a large amount on money, so-
There is, there is.
Anything that does come down, the pipeline now, we'll have the money to take care of it.
Definitely, yeah, I agree.
Good.
So, that's good.
Excellent.
That's the way to build a school.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yes, it is, rub it in.
The master plan team will actually have our final meeting a couple of weeks from tonight, three weeks, I guess, exactly, November 16. We're actually going to take a tour of the Swanson Road Intermediate School, and that will really conclude the work of the master plan team as, as established by the school committee. So, it's my thought that perhaps they'd be invited, whether or not they'd be interested in coming out two nights, but at the very least, we could invite them to that meeting just to be recognized, and you as a committee could disband the group. There's ongoing work at Swanson Road, but between Mr. Fahey, Mr. Ringard continues to play a big part in that, but I don't know that we need the committee any longer. This was the group, too, that was instrumental in doing a study of our elementary schools and recommending which two to maintain as, as educational facilities, so they've been in existence for a couple of years and committed a lot of time and energy. Good work.
Any comments?
No, I think it's a good thing to invite them.
I think we should invite them, but not release them.
Okay.
Well, you want to borrow them?
They're of great value to us.
Yeah.
I'm sure they would come back if, if we invited them to again, especially Mr. Ringard.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that.
And just a reminder, the Fall Special Town Meeting is tomorrow night, we will convene at 6:30 in the guidance office, and I did include in your packet the warrant that came through, not a terribly long one, for you to have.
Excellent. Any comments?
See you tomorrow night.
I can't wait to hear him read Article Three.
Very well. Okay.
The town budget kickoff, we just notified, that will take place a week from Wednesday, it will be at Town Hall, since the others of us will be down at the Cape at the MASCS, MASAS conference, Mrs. Worsbicky will go and bring back any information that is shared, but if you remember, we had the joint meeting of the finance school committee in Portis Electra, Mr. Casanova, which at that time had shared some preliminary documentation, but Mrs. Worsbicky will provide with any updates.
Okay, and we'll be thinking about you. All right, thank you. Upcoming school committee meetings.
So, typically, our next meetings following tomorrow night's town meeting will be November 17th to 18th, those are our budget meetings, and typically, we've, the committee has begun those earlier, just because they tend to be long meetings that were packed with information, so I share that with you for your consideration, should you wish to do so.
Any-
I can begin as early as you need, six, six-thirty, it's fine.
I think-
I don't know about everybody else, though.
I could probably pull off six-thirty. Six would be, would be difficult. Are you okay with six-thirty? I could probably pull off 6:30. 6:00 would be difficult. Are you okay with 6:30?
Yeah, 6:30 is fine.
I think you either one, so really, whatever the consensus is.
Okay. I entertain a motion.
I don't have a problem at 6:30. I just have family issues that hopefully will be taken care of by then.
Yeah.
But I will do my most to definitely be there for the budget, if I can.
Well, if you can't make it, hopefully, you can look over the information, watch the meetings, and possibly get back to us with some of your ideas.
Sure.
Appreciate that. Thank you. So I entertain a motion to begin the budget presentation meetings at 6:30 PM.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And then finally, under upcoming events, it's hard to believe that Monday will already be November 2nd. We were talking about that earlier today. November is feeling literacy month, as, or as it typically has been deemed such through the governor's office, so I anticipate we may hear the same. But in anticipation of that, many of the elementary schools have literacy events taking place, so those usually get great turn-ons from families, and I'm sure this year will be the same. And then also, you see, we have our middle school, high school, first try band concert that will take place on November 19th. So shortly thereafter, will be holiday concerts and such as well.
And they'll be at the high school, right?
Yes, that's at the high school, yes.
Excellent. Any questions? Comments? Let me now move on to teaching and learning report.
So the first item I want to share with you this evening is around concurrent enrollment. Concurrent enrollment is when high school students are able to take college-level courses within their own high school and receive credit for that. Colleges use either their own professors to provide that course, or they also use some of our own teachers who might qualify as adjuncts. So we're really excited to try to bring that opportunity to some of our high school students. So over the past couple of months, Mr. Hanfield, the principal of the high school, Amy Sampson, a guidance counselor there, and I have been meeting to kind of roll out a plan for that and write up a proposal. Recently, most recently, we met with Christine Hebert from Consigum and Community College, and she kind of explained to us some of the work she's doing with other area districts, Marlborough, Hudson, and Assabette, which really got us even more excited. So we're hoping that we'll be able to do a pilot this coming January, and that we'll have a written proposal for you by the end of November. So I'm hoping to bring that to you the next time we're together. We're all really excited about that.
What kind of courses would you be working here, Kathy?
Some of the intro courses, like there's an Intro to Psych that we're thinking about. There's a technology course that we're thinking about. There is the opportunity for like English 101 and Math 101, but sometimes we think that we already offer courses that are somewhat comparable with our AP, so, you know, kind of trying to look outside of what we currently offer to give some additional opportunities.
Something different that they couldn't take at Auburn High.
Right, so it'll be exciting to see how it works out.
Sounds good.
Fantastic, just from a cost-savings perspective for some students who, you know, may be burdened by that, especially the first year.
Correct. The cost is, you know, relatively minimal, and they are transferable credits to several different Massachusetts colleges. So even if we did it with Consig, they could transfer those credits to other colleges within the state.
That's great.
Would they do it during the school day or after school?
They have mixed. Sometimes they've offered them after school, but there's also been ways that they've been able to go into the schools and offer some of them. So we're looking at all those options. We're excited.
Sounds good.
The next item is the literacy leadership teamwork. This work was begun last year. I think we might have broached that subject with you a little bit. We partnered with The Hill for Literacy, and we had them come in and do a needs assessment with us from grades K to 8 around our literacy programs. And out of that needs assessment, we created a district literacy action plan. There were three focus areas of that plan, the first being the creation of a streamlined literacy assessment framework that we would use in grades K to 8. The second was the adoption of a new ELA curriculum program at grades K to 5. And the third was a focus on best practices in adolescent literacy, so that we can then create a response intervention model in grades 6 through 8. We currently have a very robust RTI program, K to 5. We want to expand that to grades 6 to 8. So on a monthly basis, these subgroups work. The first group there around the assessment, they've already decided that we will pilot a reading assessment called Star Reading, which is an online, computer online program. We'll be doing that with our at-risk readers at the middle school. The ELA committee is presently have three programs from various publishers that we're circulating through even grade level and building-based subcommittees to review those, and then asking them to go into districts and talk to teachers that are presently using these programs in other districts. We'll also have reps in from those publishing companies as a panel to answer any questions we come up with as we review these programs. And the third committee there, which is focused on adolescent literacy, they're currently going to be involved in monthly professional development that will result in an action plan for an RTI model for those grade levels. And then finally, as a result of the needs improvement in our partnership with The Hill, we are offering for some of our teachers in grades 3 through 8, an online writing program, which I always get these letters mixed up. So it's SRSD, which means Self-Regulated Strategy Development, and it complements any writing program, so it will complement what we presently have in the district, but it really works towards having kids set goals for themselves and meeting those writing goals. So we're excited about that as well. A lot of good things going on. MCAS results, as you know, are in. Only some subjects were tested based on grade level, so in your packet, you'll see an historical look at Auburn's results, and we always compare ourselves to area districts. We've done that regularly for the last few years. And I'm very proud to say that Auburn, in terms of grade 10 ELA, came out with 98% of our students scoring at the Advanced and Proficient. Can't get much better than that, and it places us second among our cohort of area districts. Our grade 10 math places us first, and we have 92% of our students scoring at the Advanced and Proficient. So that's a really great cause for celebration. In terms of our science, we're a little bit unhappy to see that we did have a slight dip across the different grades. Grade 5 and grade 10 still remain above the state average, with grade 10 remaining at the same score as last year, but slightly below the state average. So we've already met with various stakeholders of the different buildings, analyzed some of this data and look at it. We're going to create some action plans. A key piece of that will be at the middle school to really look at the textbooks that they're presently using, and then at the scope and sequence of their program. A few years back, a decision was made to reorganize the introduction of different topics within science, so we thought maybe we need to go back and look at that to see how that's working. We're also hopeful that the state will finally adopt some state standards for science and technology. They do have a draft out there now, asking for some public feedback on that, and the goal is that we'll have an adoption by the end of November that will actually help us assess all of our science programs across the grades in the district. So we're looking forward to that.
I have a question, Dr. Luzet, while we're on the subject of science. As we begin to look more at the STEM initiatives, and I believe there's now an MCAS for STEM, is that something that we would be looking to possibly get into? I know you even mentioned it as part of your goals, and not that it's something that you want to do tomorrow, or even this year, but down the road, it's obviously an interest in it. I mean, we sent that group of students, and we've had presentations in here based upon STEM. If not, maybe, just maybe a small piece of what we do in science, not necessarily testing on it right away, but another avenue for the students who are technology-minded.
Right, absolutely. And as you mentioned, it is in Dr. Brunel's goals, and that's been part of a lot of leadership discussions. I know that at the middle school this year, they have a brand-new STEM course that they worked on the curriculum over the summer, so we'll see how that, you know, moves forward during the school year. The high school, you've had teachers come in and show you some of the work that they've done.
Right.
At the elementary, they are looking for different STEM opportunities as well. We have some after-school offerings that principals are looking at. And then within the course of the science programs, we do have, engineering is elementary, E-I-E through the Boston Science Museum.
Yeah.
So they're using those as well. I think all the principals are looking for new and more challenging, actually, opportunities. So we'll continue to do our work around that, and I think as we get the new standards, it'll give us a better direction on how to do that, but...
I'm sure either way, we'll have our test scores climbing, whether it's...
I agree.
Through a STEM initiative or science.
I have a comment. So there's so many people against the testing, but this is kind of a perfect example of how the testing can benefit us, where we can see the deficit and where there's a problem and address the problem accordingly.
Absolutely.
So I think people need to keep that in mind when they're anti-test.
I agree.
Gail?
As you know, I have a science teacher in the family.
I know, as soon as I said this, I'm like, here we go.
And her scores were somewhat higher than Auburn's.
Yeah.
What she said is, there's a lot of technology, or engineering technology, on the science tests, and she has to review all that to get ready for it. Is Auburn able to do that, or are we struggling to keep up with that, part of it?
I think Auburn does a nice job, and they do review. They have mini workshops that they even build in, so say at 8th grade, something might not have been taught since 6th, and they have mini workshops where they really go back and revisit that. I think we have a greater focus on STEM now than ever. We have so much technology embedded in our classrooms that I think we just have to keep up with it, and I think the new standards will give us really more guidance around that.
Yeah. Because that's the thing, she says they're testing things that we're not really teaching.
Yeah.
So it's hard to, for the teachers, to get it in their reviews and things. Thank you.
Sounds like once we get the new standards, or we get some standards to go by, we'll be a little better off. So maybe if you could report back to us?
Absolutely.
Any time expectancy on that, or...
Well, they're hoping for the end of November.
Excellent.
To give us a decision on whether they've adopted and what they've adopted, so.
Great.
We're hoping that that's the case.
Thank you.
My, the park, I think we talked a little bit about it last time I was here. They still have not released district or school or student results, but they have released some state results, and I think there's a memo in your packet that kind of outlines some of that. It was interesting to us to see that, on the average, fewer students really scored at what the park calls beating expectations level compared to our students across the state scoring with the Advanced and Proficient. The only exception to that was grade 4. Where our math students, it was about equal, but the ELA, actually, our students scored, more students scored in the meeting expectations on park than they did at Advanced and Proficient on the MCAS prior. So that was an interesting finding. On November 17th, I mentioned this last time as well, the commissioner will be making a recommendation. In the past, we were told there would be two options, would either be to adopt park or to go back to MCAS. We're presently hearing that he's proposing a third option, which may be MCAS 2.0, which would be MCAS-like, but with a lot of park-like questions built into it. So it would be a revision of the current MCAS to reflect some park types.
A hybrid.
A hybrid, yes, yes.
When would that be rolled out?
So on March, November 17th, he will make a recommendation. That would be what he would recommend.
And then, it's anyone's guess.
And then he would have the test, I guess, prepared to review?
That's a good question.
Or just see what sticks him along?
No, I, well, that's a good question. So depending on which way he goes, if it is MCAS 2.0 version, he's going to have to have a task force that's really going to have to go back in and revise those. Way back at the beginning of park, there was a lot of work at DESI around having an optional MCAS or a different variation of MCAS, but then we went towards the park. So I think there is some preliminary work that they've already done, and now that they do have park, I think it will be easy for them to meld the two together. But again, it would be a change, and...
My last question would be about, how useful would the data actually be if we've gone from MCAS to park to MCAS 2.0? Do you feel like the data we'd be getting back would actually be beneficial to us or confusing? I guess I'm saying, how do we, how do we stay the course in everything that we're talking about that's reviewed and...
Well, the statisticians at DESI are working really hard to make sure that they correlate this data in some fashion so that it is meaningful. I can't speak well to that. I am not a statistician, but I think they have people on staff who are working to do that, kind of crossover.
And are we looking at, if we do a test run like we did last year with the park, are we looking at scores not counting against us again?
That hasn't really been explained to us.
Yeah, so this, through the chair, as Dr. Luzet was saying, this really kind of came out in left field, I think, for many people, because there was a third option that was floated out there. So I think it really remains to be seen, as Dr. Luzet was saying. I think it would take some time with MCAS 2.0. They did, actually, there were some business leaders who came out and spoke pretty vocally about the fact that should stay the course with park. So I think it all remains to be seen. He will make a recommendation to the board of elementary and secondary yet, but it's ultimately up to them to decide what's going to be used. So I would say, stay tuned, probably.
Do you know if there's going to be a workshop at the Cape or representatives from...
You know, I haven't seen any preliminary, the, on what sessions will be offered. We'll probably get that tomorrow, because it usually comes at least a week or so in advance, but it is very much a hot topic, so I'd be surprised if there weren't discussions around it. Be very surprised.
It was nice they had someone, they actually had representatives there last year, and I don't know, the way that they were treated in that closed session, they may not come back.
Yeah, Wayne and I sat in one, and it was a bloodbath.
I'm hoping.
Awful, yeah. We got up and laughed, because it was so, people were insulting.
It really got...
Yeah, it was crazy.
He's right.
Not to step on any toes here, but I'm sure that our teachers, everything that we do is data-driven, so they're keeping a pretty accurate count of what each individual student can do. So should the waters be muddied a little bit through test scores, we still have a pretty good idea of what our students are doing.
That's a great point, because that's one snapshot in time, right? We have so much other data.
Right.
Kathy, about how many, I mean, I keep seeing in the paper, our students are spending too much time on testing. Overall, in a year, how much would you say is state testing? About how many hours is it?
Well, I don't know. I'd have to do some math. So we do the math in ELA, and they probably have two sessions in each that run about two hours each, so there's four hours, and then some grades take the science, technology, and engineering one as well, and that's probably another two sessions of an hour each. So depending on what grade level you're in, it's four to six hours of testing out of the course of a year. I don't know what that percentage is. Something I recently read was that it comes out to about, people are saying, about 12% of the time is spent in testing, where ideally, they would want it to be 2%, so. And they did, after last year's park, decide that we spent too much time and cut down by one session or two.
Yeah, I saw that. That was good.
So that was good, that they heard people's voices around that, so.
I mean, the way they were writing in the paper, I wondered if things had changed that much since I retired, that the kids were now spending weeks in testing. I mean, it wasn't like that at all.
And everything that, and just the prep as well?
Oh.
The curriculum is different.
But the prep is, your curriculum, you're teaching, so...
Right. And actually, the online version, I think, was a little quicker than the paper versions of MCAS.
Yes. Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome. And anything I learn, I'll be happy to shoot.
Okay.
And then just finally, I think in your packet, there's an agenda from October 9th, where we had our first half professional day. The focus for the elementary folks, what's the new math program, Go Math, they did a lot of training around that. At the high school and middle school, there was a lot of work done around data analysis and curriculum planning, and a lot of our special area teachers worked together either on curriculum or some planning around parent presentations. We have the nurses do some planning around that, as well as our guidance people. If you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Comments? No? I would just like to say that I really enjoyed this report, and anytime we can interact like that and kind of bring a storm, and that was excellent. I'm glad that you began this process, Dr. Brunel.
People have been good work.
Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Okay. Let's go for the business report. I provided in your package a year-to-date budget update for fiscal year 16, and in correspondence with that, some of, where I found some of the places where we're in the negative, I did some transfers, and so I, that's also provided for you, so I would be looking for a motion for that to approve. If there's any questions regarding the actual budget or the transfers that I provided.
I would entertain a motion to approve the fall's EVC emergency plans as amended.
I'll make the motion.
Second. I was...
Transfers.
Yeah, I thought we were doing transfers.
Is that what he said?
No, it isn't what he said, no.
No.
No, it isn't.
He was ahead of the game.
Oh, then I'm not. I take back that motion and rescinding.
We need a motion to approve the transfer of funds, right? We need a motion to approve the transfer of funds, right?
I'll make that motion to approve the transfer from the $4,000 to the $2,000 series, from the $2,000 to the $7,000 series.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Thank you. I'd also like to do a little bit of an update on the MSBA, the National School Building Authority, the PROPA. I've been in close contact with them. I usually give their office a call at least a couple of times a month, checking on, to make sure that they're getting our documentation and the money keeps coming through. As far as our, the school building, the new middle school, school building project, we've requested, I'm working on request number 33 that's not on here, but 32 has been requested, and we are, we will be receiving that money this Thursday. They usually pay it on a Thursday. So money for number 32 will be coming in this Thursday for us. I'm also, I've checked in with them on the accelerated repair, which is, it's also entitled Middle School, but it's Ted Swanson Road. And we, they have received payment number three. They're working on that. They do an audit and just check everything through with all the invoices that we submit. So I'm hoping within another week, we'll have that money as well. So I'm trying to keep on top of that and do monthly. They only allow us to submit once a month for each of the projects, so, but they've been extremely helpful and very informative, and anytime I have a question, I always feel like I can call and ask. And our OPMs have been also very supportive, are working with me and getting all the data in and the information submitted, so... Okay. I've also provided a listing of revolving accounts and special funds for you to look at here. With the closing of Julie Bancroft and Mary D. Stone, and the reorganization of the Swanson Road Intermediate, where we have the grades three through five combined, we've had to make, if you look at the listing, there's some name changes that need to be made on some of the accounts. Student activities, we've been actively trying to work on getting the student activities resolved so that they're in the proper accounts. So I'd like to get your permission to approve some name changes. Also, there have been some accounts that have, I've noticed have zero balances, so I'd like to also get permission to take those that have zero balances and make them inactive, not delete them. You know, and if we were to reactivate them at some point at your choosing, we could do so, but for the time being, so they're not listing, constantly being listed as zero or whatever, so... Okay. So I, there's a couple different motions there.
I would, I would entertain a motion to approve the transfer of funds from Satellite Galaxy on student activity accounts as proposed above by the business manager.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
We'll take care of that with the town accountant and also get that resolved within our Munis accounting system. So the next update, we'll have the accurate needs showing, and the student activities we're getting going on that as well, so, all right?
Excellent. And I would entertain...
We need to grant permission to make inactive any elementary revolving account with a zero balance. I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to policies.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So four policies here for your review. The first one is policy EDC regarding use of school-owned materials. This is actually a policy that has been on the books, but I share it with you for your review and update. And tied directly to that is the authorized use of the district-owned vehicle. We've had procedures in place, but there's not been a school committee policy. So it is my recommendation that you approve each of these on first reading.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion to approve both policies on first reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
And then the other two policies which deal with safety planning, one, the emergency plans, this has been updated, you can see in red here. This is in concert with the law, Master of the Law, 69, Section 8A, an update in terms of the timeline. And then secondly, a policy regarding security cameras in schools. We do have them in each of our schools, and in a review realized we had not yet created a policy on that. So it is my recommendation that you approve. The first one would just be a simple amendment and update, and then the second one would be on first reading.
I would entertain a motion to approve policy EDC, emergency plans as amended.
I'll make that motion.
You'll second it?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. And I would entertain a motion to approve policy ECAF, security cameras in schools on first reading.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? Aye.
Aye.
All in favor, aye.
Aye, aye.
It is a vote.
And that is all I had?
And that is all. I would entertain a motion to adjourn before I mess something else up.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
No executive session.
No executive session? Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good night, everyone.